... August 21st, 2018. May we have a little call please?
President Harris?
Present.
Mr. Haddam? Mr. Menz?
Present.
Ms. Rana?
Present.
Ms. Taylor?
Here.
Dr. Walker?
Present.
Ms. Winkdany? Sixth president.
Thank you. May we stand for the pleasure of the Our pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, as I promised this evening, as we shared with our summer graduates, we're going to ask Chief Aaron Newley to direct us at this time.
Good evening, President Harris, President Lawrie, members of the Dayton Board of Education, parents, guests, and graduates. Each of you has achieved your first goal, to graduate from high school. You are about to embark on your journey into adulthood. Go forward with courage, confidence, and focus. We wish each of you much happiness, good health, and the best of luck in the next chapter of your life. To Superintendent Dr. Lilith Lawrie and to members of the Dayton Board of Education, it is with great pleasure that I do hereby certify that each of these candidates has met with the Carnegie Unit and Ohio State Test Requirements set forth by the Dayton Public Schools and the Ohio Department of Education. I present our summer graduates to our Superintendent Dr. Lawrie. And to the Dayton Board of Education, I accept the graduates for the class of 2018. And at this time, I'd like to ask board members to come forward and stand as we recognize this place. All right, with Dr. Hill, Principal of Belmont High School, please come forward.
Good afternoon, and congratulations, graduates. I call your name, so you... Uh, just let me get you some to here to go and see the board. Darian Brooks. Jawan Burton. Eric Crowder. Christian Jorgensen. Kenye Morgan.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. All right, Dr. Henry from Dunbar High School.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Paul Lawrence Dunbar of Allen College Hospital is very well pleased to present Mrs. Sharon Delaune Davis.
Uh, Mrs. Burdon, if you can come forward from Starry School of the Arts. It's my pleasure to present Patrick Turner.
We have reached a point in our agenda for hearing of the public. I'd like to read a brief statement to kind of give us some directions. The public is invited to attend board meetings, and individuals are given a designated time to express viewpoints during the public hearing portion of the meeting. Anyone wishing to address the Board's Education during the hearing of the public portion of the board meeting will comply with the following rules. One, complete a request form prior to the hearing of the public and submit it to the Public Information Office. Two, when called upon, identify yourself and state your reason for addressing the board. Three, address the board as a whole, with the president and our board members, individuals, materials for distribution to the board are handed to the treasurer. Five, limit remarks to three minutes, if the president has discretion. Submit the time. When the time is up, you are to stop speaking. Six, it is inappropriate to address any matter involving pending disputes, grievances under the legal agreement, disciplinary action involving an employee or student, ongoing legal negotiations, concerns of matters that have already been settled, and/or any matter which because of this nature is deemed appropriate to be discussed in executive session. The purpose of the public hearing portion of the meeting is for members of the public to express viewpoints and public concerns. Thank you so very much. Treasurer Alagon, who do we have this evening?
Second, it's one, followed by Patricia Ploton.
Good evening, supporting and board, my name is Patricia Abbott, and I'm with the Office of Strategic Communications. And we are getting to talk about the dining room for interpreters. Um, we have a lot of foreign-speaking families that have been in the dark community, they're starting to last for a year. And we need to make sure that they're accommodated. A lot of these students don't speak English, they need to meet their parents. And there is no reason to your attention, it's because we know that we all want high school to school with their ESS classes. And so, we have had several students to be transferred to Dunbar High School. They cannot speak English, they might need their families. And because of this, my niece has been pulled out of several classes that she needs for graduation in order to interpret. So I have to give the mic to her, so that she can give you a thing.
For example, today, I was pulled out of my secondary class, so I can sit in the class.
Just a minute, please. Denise, could you help her with that? Because she's not close enough to this for us to hear. Thank you. Can I come off the thing? Thank you.
Okay, so, um, for example, today, I was pulled out of my secondary class, so I can sit in another secondary class, one of the ones that I was interpreting before. And, you know, we're just speaking with the whole entire class, but I, ever since school was started, I've been pulled out of my classes several times to show my parents, their families, who do not speak English, and show them around, really, and show them classes, to make sure that they understand what's going on. And I am always looking there, who didn't really interpret and understand, and, um, communicate through my own language, myself, and the Spanish teacher. So, um, another thing is that these kids are freshmen, and I'm a senior, so I really want them to get out, because, you know, I have a student who's a graduate, so I'm gonna be there, so.
So she can see who the interpreters around the district. I know that there are younger students who don't speak English. I don't know how they, um, are held or serviced in the elementary schools or junior schools, but for high schools, um, they need interpreters. And she told me that, um, one person was from Honduras, another from Guatemala. And they have students coming in from, uh, who speak Swahili. So we need to address these issues. Uh, these families are here, they may have to stay home for whatever reason, but their children still need the opportunity for education. If they don't understand the language, they won't get that. So I just want to bring them to your attention. Thank you.
So, I just wanted to express my thanks for many of the great things that are going on in DPS, it's an exciting year. Uh, however, a couple years ago, it was decided not to offer foods anymore, and I have a Spanish teacher in the Board for Foods Room, so I get to hear the great distress of our students who really wish there was a foods class, and it is a STEM subject. Cookie is STEM. Collaboration, respect, responsibility, everything we're trying to teach them. So we would love, there's actually a food science curriculum already developed, and so great when it's available, if we could bring, um, food science back to our tech school, and maybe the whole district, we would love that, and so good actions. And I think it's a great lifestyle. Thanks.
Next one, Melissa Roroni.
All right, good evening, and before I begin, I'd like to wish our summer graduates and sisters, if you are. My name is Melissa Roroni, and I am here to share my concerns about two recent changes to the English Language Centers or ELL program. My first concern is the reassignment of Teresa Troyer from ELL Coordinator to ELL Director at Arby Elementary School. As regards to this transition, the ELL Coordinator position is how we can lead in acts and services throughout the district for one of both all-level populations and the beginning of the school year. And you just heard an example of one of those tasks. While I may not know the details of this decision, acknowledging that Teresa Troyer is one of the reasons that I boast about DPS. Teresa's commitment and passion for working with ELL students and human links is illustrated by her 15 years of service as ELL Coordinator for the district, as well as her selection has been held by the U.S. State Department English Language Program. Furthermore, my name became a certified welcoming city and was audited by the National Honor of Welcoming AmeriCorps. The honors I have been for are incredibly impressed by Ms. Troyer, and how even the inherent rental and engagement programming she created in the agency by the honor of her. I realize personal decisions are confidential and largely made by the administration. However, the school board approves most HR decisions, and this particular reassignment was not meant to award. I am incredibly concerned about the acts and services during what I understand is a reclassification of the position as a strategy or a timeline has not been met. A student and family center force of action would keep Teresa in her position through the reclassification in order to ensure a seamless transition. The vacant ELL Coordinator demonstrates a lack of understanding of the population most impacted by this decision. Students and families who largely do not know their education rights, who may be afraid to speak up, or who may lack English proficiency to share their concerns. The second concern I would like to address today is what appears to be at the structuring of ELL programming throughout the district. I understand that ELL students who don't welcome being placed at Belmont due to capacity and instantly placed at their home schools. Belmont High School has been a hub for ELL students with new innovative programming based on best practices, including Welcome Belmont and a sheltered school within a school mall. Furthermore, many of the non-ESL teachers at Belmont have received additional TESL training and other professional development to ensure their teaching habits are appropriate for the ELL population. Immigrants and refugees are an asset to the entire community. It may appear that placing ELL students in their own schools permits ELL students to fully integrate and that all students benefit from the cultural diversity. However, placement throughout the district feels like we're putting the cart before the horse. Currently, only Belmont and Conance High Schools have full ESL attraction, and it took several years to build a program of that importance. Simply providing an ELL structure at a high school is entirely losing the point. Many students who come to be in public schools as new high school students have interrupted schooling or lack formal education. The Belmont environment is based on national best practices and research for academic success. As new students are placed in their home schools without the full ELL infrastructure or support, students will fall through the cracks, and immigrant families may move out of district rather than move their concerns forward to DPS. We all know that students thrive when they feel a sense of belonging in community, when their parents are engaged in their education, when they have access to programs such as Welcome Belmont that foster positive culture and youth development. Yet these supportive services will be wapping at the new bottom, and to begin this transition without an ELL coordinator in place feels as though immigrant students are being deprioritized in the district. Thank you, and I appreciate you allowing me to speak over.
Harby Tuck. Mr. Oh, Mr. Harby Tuck.
My hearing is not over. My name is Harby Tuck, retired IDO. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Four years ago, I spoke to the school board. When I finished Doctor Lawrie's, the head of the school board at the time said, "Mr. Tuck may have a copy of the petition." Nevertheless, it was not informative. We've had 25 years of child schools. They don't solve the problem. School choice on a student leaves, that doesn't fix the school. So how do we fix public schools? Children are born different, and there's nothing to do with the culture of others yet, or how much honey the mother has. They're different. We recognize that they're different in 7th grade. Some take algebra, some take biology, etc. But the young people want, the better, is to learn. We should ability group 2nd grade, 3rd, 4th. For example, this way, right now, a typical school might have 110 2nd grade students. There are five classrooms, 22 in each classroom. Each classroom has two or three below, two or three above. That's the good, only 17 below average. It is well documented that elementary students that are below average do much better in a small classroom. But, in order to not have more teachers, we have to put only 7 above average. The teachers have no trouble with them, bright kids. In this manner, we change from year to year as each student changes their ability. Now, how do I know that this works? I went to school in the early 30s and 40s in a public school in a low-income suburb of Boston. Graduated 300, 350, never did a T R T. However, we had no counsel. I decided to send in an application, and I'm sent a rejection. That's right, not only was it a rejection, but somebody tells the dean, he should interview this 16-year-old for what he's doing in the real world. So I spoke to the dean, he says, "What are you doing after school?" I said, "My dad has the appliance store, but the three of boys were in the service, and I haven't come in after school, so if you go, then find things to sell." And one of them was a radio man, and they have a couple of boats, meters, parts. I learned how to fix radios, and during the war, anybody that knew how to do one was in the service. So he said to me, "Why didn't you put on the application?" I said, "Wasn't schoolwork." Now, three of my classmates were on waiting list, but MRT didn't want to take from our school. At the last minute, they were also accepted because they couldn't get students from different parts of the world or America because of the war. And MRT is surprised. The four of us from the top 10%. How did that happen? Because I was in the high third, and I went to the high fourth. They ability grouped and interviewed, definitely showed results. I feel that nothing is working in America affects public schools. Dayton has an opportunity to demonstrate, without any additional cost, that this will improve public education. Thank you.
Dr. Gabriela Pique.
Good afternoon. My name is Gabriela Pique. I'm a member of the Human Relations Council. I work closely with the Wellcome Dayton Project, and I'm also a part of immigrant community. Many immigrants have come to me, asking me to walk them through the enrollment process. And I'm going to illustrate to you the challenges they face with the most recent attempt to find proper placement for a young asylum seeker. He's going to turn 17 in September. His home, in his home country, he only finished the 6th grade, and he was not successful at passing the 7th grade. The baby public school place in Amherst assigned him to a 9th grade in Meadowdale High School in Harrison Township, 70 miles away from his home. The mother was not right, and he has no way to go to school. I went to the place in Amherst requesting for the student to be placed in the 7th grade, expecting him to learn a new language while sticking two school years. And I went to a school that is 17 miles away from home. He's setting him up for a year. I was told that due to his age, there was nothing I could be done to help this young man. His mother decided to withdraw him from school and to find an alternative school for her son. Because the student had already attended one day of school, I had to go to Meadowdale High School to withdraw the student. At this school, I spoke with Mr. Carey, director of Trinity and our faculty building. And he tried to deter the mother from withdrawing her child from the school district. I explained to him that his student needed regular accommodations due to him being diagnosed with a learning disability. Had I not been there for this student, he would have been placed in a regular classroom, two years above his grade level. It is easy to imagine how easily he would fall behind, especially given to him not knowing English. As it stands now, a week after the school started, this student is at home, awaiting to see if he will be able to transfer to government high school. This option does not matter advice. He's going to withdraw from the district and probably end up in a charter school. I am concerned, again, that if I had not intervened for this student, he would be expected to ride a bicycle 17 miles to sit in a 9th grade classroom, for he would wait until he turns 18 to be able to drop out of school. This is just one of many cases in which families have requested assistance. I see cases where students require IEPs, and nothing has done for promoting these. In situations like this, without the appropriate curricular adjustments, the emotional need of children are frequently unmet. The key to promoting healthy relationships between teachers and children, as well as between teachers and the families of these students, are crucial for promoting the academic achievement. These are considerable communication barriers that are not conducive to the type of parent-teacher communication or interactions needed to ensure that English learning students acquire academic success. I am raising my concerns, definitely, to bring it to your attention, but also to let you know that with me being an ally, that we have to help in any way possible to solve this problem. Thank you very much.
Nina Barde. Followed by Andy Deschet. Nyla Verrey. Followed by Andy Deschet.
Hi, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Um, I don't know if you can speak Spanish because I'm feeling more comfortable to speak my own language. There is?
Right.
Thanks.
She's a Belmont High School graduate.
Okay, and she'd like her cousin to be able to follow in her footsteps. But Belmont, as you heard before, is very poor right now, so she's wishing there was some sort of way that her cousin could get to Belmont where she got a hell of a student. Okay, because at Belmont, they have a very structured program that helps students achieve their goals and overcome their language difficulties. And so she's speaking here for her cousin and other students who need this kind of support to successfully finish school. Okay, and so she's here speaking for the various people who could benefit from the type of instruction in the ESL that is available at Belmont High School. Okay, and I thank you very much for this opportunity. Let me just speak here first myself. Thanks.
My name is Mirasa Burea Birebelebu. I first want to thank you for all you're doing. So far, the district have been doing a great job about our children. They still contribute by their services and for now, we are lacking service in transportation and also in... Because we don't have enough people to express our grievance. Now, when our kids go to school, they lack bus and because of few personnel at DPS, we don't know who to call, we don't know who to reach to. And I am a parent of... I have, I'm a parent of six children at DPS, later in public school, and so I have moved, but I have spent the whole week calling the transportation because there was nobody answering our calls. My kids have not been picked up from home, so we don't have transportation yet. And I have one also who are at registration and his registration form didn't go through yet and have been going there and come back, but yet I didn't have received help yet. And I thank you for listening to my grievance. Thank you.
In nineteen thirty-eight, that was my father coming to this country and having to learn his third language. And it's kind of odd, we have a district that talks about why to spend sixty thousand dollars with a ad agency that never shows up at any meetings, doesn't pay any attention to what's going on. And they are supposed to help you get students to come here, but you don't listen to the people that come up here and do anything, except on the rare occasion that last month, I said, "How can you keep spending money and hiring all these people that Dr. Lali wants to hire, all these chiefs and hundred thousand dollar cost people, when you haven't seen an organizational chart?" Well, you know, you got an organizational chart finally. It's like the cart before the horse. It's like this wild, we'll spend money on things like a half a million dollars for the University of West Virginia, but we can't spend money for having translators in our classrooms. You want students in your classrooms and we have an immigrant community. Hello, people, wake up. Now, when people come up here and talk to you, that's an opportunity for you to actually do something, to respond, to actually acknowledge them, to say, "Thank you for coming here. I've heard..." Let me recount what you said, we're on, we're going to get a response to you, but no, you just sit there like a bunch of deaf ears. That's not how it's supposed to work. You work for these people. You work for us. We come up here and we would like a response. And the time to do it is while we're standing in the podium, not in new business, because you would elect a parliamentarian like Mr. McManus to be your board president. He would know that new business is for things that actually require a vote. New business is not there to sit there, there are speeches. Time for speeches isn't even on your agenda. You don't have an item that says comments by board members. There is a need in this community for all kinds of things. What I find most amazing is you talked about high school graduation rates and you can find money for all these chiefs, but you can't find money for bus service for our high school students. If you hint, if you want the students to show up and go to class, paying for their transportation comes before some pilot program with University of West Virginia for half a million dollars for which some chief being paid a hundred thousand dollars can't even give you a proponent presentation. She stood up there and had a presentation that said the perfect title sign and you just sat there and watched it. She still has a job. If I did that in my business, I'd be fired. So you have a chance to respond to me, which you probably won't, or you could just sit there like deaf ears. But this has to change because all these people coming out here have something to say to you and they're trying to communicate in multiple languages and yet, no response. Why aren't you asking the superintendent, "What has she done to fix this problem?" Why haven't you taken the one key person who's been running this program for years and demoted her, told her she could apply for a new position when it comes open, when we have needs right now? Somebody's seriously out of touch because hiring all the PhDs you want to fill these positions isn't going to solve the problem. Having people that actually speak the language that much. And it wouldn't have hurt if we had somebody announcing the names and actually speaks the language in a way that people understand it. Nothing personal, but find somebody that can actually read the names so it's clear. Thank you.
Good evening. My remarks tonight are improving test scores in the Dayton Public Schools. Dayton Public Schools has some excellent schools and I have been in two of them the last two weeks, Kaiser and Kim, and I enjoy working in those schools. They have great teachers and great students and there are other great Dayton schools. And what we have to do now is improve the scores in the poor performing schools. Here are my suggestions tonight. Number one, four hours of reading every day in the classroom. Four hours of reading which includes science, social studies, grammar, writing, spelling, reading, vocabulary, four hours a day. Number two, the low performing schools, they have after-school programs starting in September, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, one hour after school where they read and work on words, hopefully with teacher compensation. Number three, the low performing schools, Saturday schools with approximately four or five times during the school year, Saturday from ten to twelve, again, two hours with teacher compensation, working with students on reading. And finally, when the test is coming up, two weeks before the test, have the reading interventionist work with the students full-time, all day for two weeks, and work on strategies to pass the reading test, because the reading test is the most important part to passing the test. Drastic times call for drastic actions. And finally, the final piece I want to present this evening is I recommend that tomorrow there will be an email sent to principals and teachers asking that every day, every day, the students have one hour of homework, one hour of reading only. Now let me explain that. When the student comes home and has a snack, fifteen minutes of reading, fifteen minutes before supper, fifteen minutes after supper, fifteen minutes before they go to bed. That's every day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, Christmas, the day after Christmas, Thanksgiving Day, and if you fall behind a little bit, make it up on other days, because reading is very important. Drastic times call for drastic actions. So Dr. Lali, tomorrow, I hope there'll be an email sent out and asking one homework assignment every day for the Dayton Public School students, including the seniors, the middle-class students or the middle grades, excuse me, and of course, elementary students, that they read one hour a day at home every day. Thank you so much. God bless you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Alvaro. Do we have any farming units this evening that would like to share?
I believe we have a speaker. She was called first out and I looked for her.
I apologize.
Two speakers.
If I say...
We have, we have two. You may come in, in whatever order you decide.
Hello, good evening, thank you. My name is Teresa Troyer. I'm an ESL English teacher. It's time for a poll. "The Lesson of the Moth" by Don Marques. I was talking to a moth the other evening. He was trying to break into an electric light bulb and frying himself on the wires. "Why do fellows pull this stunt?" I asked him. "Because it's the conventional thing for moths." "Have you ever sensed?" "Plenty of it," he answered. "But at times, we get tired of using it. We get bored with the routine and crave beauty and excitement. Fire is beautiful and we know that if we get too close, it will kill us. But what does that matter? It is better to be happy for the moment and be burned up with beauty than to live a long time and be bored all the while. So we wad all our life up in one little roll and then we shoot the roll. That's what life is for. It's better to be a part of beauty for one instant and then cease to exist than to exist forever and never be a part of beauty. Our attitude toward life is come easy, go easy. We are like human beings used to be before they became too civilized to enjoy themselves. And before I could argue him out of his philosophy, he waved and elated himself on a happy cigar lighter. I do not agree with him. Myself, I would rather have half the happiness and twice the longevity. But at the same time, I wish there was something I wanted as badly as he wanted to fry himself. I have been very fortunate that I wanted something that badly in my past years as the ELO coordinator. I found a family with our EL students, their families, our ESL teachers, so many others in Dayton Public Schools and in the Dayton community who also want so badly to welcome our ELs and to serve them well. The simple label of vacancy by the ELO coordinator does not capture what that looks like. My concern and my hope is that the vacancy cannot merely be filled, but will overflow with the passion that is our ESL community. Thank you.
Again, I'm Ms. Ellen, it's Teresa. I just want to ask if you've noticed any discrepancies in the financial report. There is a situation where it says we're not to exceed two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars for the juvenile delinquency, something, juvenile report. However, on the report side, we're actually paying out two hundred and eighty-six thousand and five hundred and seventy-five dollars. So it doesn't say that there's an increase, it doesn't say... I just looked at it before we came, so I couldn't quite figure. I'm not sure if it's fixed, but that's something we need to look at. So it's something that we also need to do in regards to our school system and distressing all these changes. We got the letter saying that we have a possible takeover and that, yeah, we've done all these changes. We've done a complete revamp of the ESL. We've gotten a coordinator and now things are in the midst. We're implementing many, many different programs right now and it seems like a very, very bad scramble and it's distressing because I don't know if that's going to be, I don't know if that's going to work. I mean, it doesn't feel like it's going to work. So it's something that I think we're needs to think about when we look at programs. I think we need to ask more questions and you can say, "Okay, how is this going to actually work?" And let's see how this, I mean, look at the long-term situation, because I'm not sure if I'm looking at that. I think we're just looking at the short term and not necessarily long term. An idea I have is to create a community panel meeting for teachers and employees so that you four can actually hear from us people that are in the trenches, as opposed to me just coming up here because I feel like I'm going to tell you everything that I'm experiencing. It happens. And I also, I think that is enough. Like, do you know that we have over thirty kids in our classroom? Do you know that there are specialized kids that are riding their buses with no parents? There are things that I think you guys should know as we press forward. I mean, I think the only thing we can do is if we actually have a conversation with people that are involved in doing it and not, you know, hearing from the top, but hearing from the bottom where we are. So it's just something I think, I think we really need to look at and having that kind of panel meeting where you actually talk to us, us, not other people, but actually people that are in the trenches. That's just another one. Thank you.
Moving now here for farming units.
Thank you, Mr. President, Board President.
Thank you, Mr. President, Board President, Reverend Dr. Harris, Board Member, Superintendent Lali, Treasurer Braha, good evening. First of all, with respect to the last speaker, um, just a slight correction, we as teachers are never at the bottom. I want to make sure that's known to all in the room, and those issues are at the forefront of discussions that go on with administration in the district all the time. And some of those very issues that were brought up are conversations that were had as recently as yesterday with top administration in the district, including busing issues with special ed kids, parents that are needed across the district, so forth and so on, and those are being addressed, let me assure you. So before I, I start, because Joni and I worked on my, excuse me, presentation for this evening, it, it occurred to me, as tonight's hearing of the public went on, Board and Superintendent, that there's been a change in the hearing of the public. And the overwhelming majority of presentations tonight were student-centered. Were about students. Were focused on students. And that's a good thing. And that's a change over past four years. And I think that's a positive, and that's something that, that I think the public who spoke tonight need, need to be applauded for and held up for, and I hope that's something that continues in the future. So as Joni and I worked today, back and forth via emailing and the telephone, when, when Joni had some planning time, the title of our essay is "What We Did Last Summer." Just as DPS was dismissing for the summer break, DEA Vice President Joni Watson was appointed by the NEA President Lily Eskelson Garcia to a task force which is charged with investigating NEA policy language on racial equity. This is an extremely important and prestigious appointment by our NEA President and DEA Vice President Joni Watson is, is to be congratulated on that appointment. On June twelfth and eighteenth, DEA leadership was invited to and participated in two-day-long planning retreats at the regional center with DPS Cabinet, academic team leaders planning for this school year. From June eighteenth through June twentieth, again DEA Vice President Joni Watson led a team of DEA Executive Board members, some of them here tonight, through the Ohio Education Association Summer Academy in Columbus, where teams from across the state focused on leading the way for continuous improvement in public education. On Friday, June twenty-second, DEA Office hosted OEA legislative screenings for candidates from Senate District Five, House District Forty, House District Forty-One, House District Forty-Two, and House District Forty-Three, during which recommendations for endorsement were made to the Ohio Education Association. For three days at the end of June, Joni Watson was in Washington DC writing curriculum for NEA Women's Leadership Training Modules. On Tuesday, July seventeenth, the Dayton Education Association Executive Board held its summer planning meeting, welcomed its newly-elected members to our board. On Tuesday, July twenty-fourth, the Dayton Education Association Executive Board partnered with the DPS academic team and DPS Cabinet members to create the Dayton Way, a unique identity for DPS and a clear way for us to move forward on agreed-upon principles. From August first through August fourth, Vice President Joni Watson was in Chicago participating in a Train the Trainer model work on social justice through the National Education Association. On Thursday, August second, we met with our educators, new to DPS and new to the profession, for ninety minutes at David H. Ponnet's Premier Technology School, High School, and provided them with information about who we are and what we do, in addition to answering any questions they had. As DEA was their last session for the week, we may or may not have let them go about thirty minutes early so they could get out to their buildings and get to work. On Friday, August third, I met with our new chief of, of the Office of Exceptional Children, Dr. Nichols, and about fifteen of our teachers over some staffing issues. I thank personally Dr. Nichols for meeting with us and clearly explaining those issues so that we, we could move forward with that staffing. On Monday morning, August sixth, I'm here with the DPS Business Advisory Committee for the regularly scheduled meeting. In and among all of those meetings, workshops, planning sessions, and events, the DEA Office remained open throughout the summer to serve our one thousand members. I happen to believe the Dayton Education Association sets the standard in customer service, considering our resources and staff of one full-time person in the office and four part-time but extremely dedicated officers, and I am proud of that. I say all this not to submit a report to you, the audience, or the Board, or the listening audience, in sort of a tongue-in-cheek summer report about what we did last summer, but to let everybody know that there is no entity more committed to partnering with the Dayton Public Schools to improve education in Dayton on behalf of the children of the city of Dayton in improving education on behalf of the families and the community in Dayton Public Schools. We are that entity, we are the Dayton Education Association. And that brings us to the Great Convocation and Opening Day on Tuesday, August seventh. Finally, on behalf of the members of the Dayton Education Association, I would like to thank the members of the Board of Education. I would like to thank the administration and the superintendent for that opening day, for the work you put into it, but most of all, for not just saying you value us, but for showing us that we owe that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do we have any other farming units this evening? Here we now move forward. Board members, Superintendent, we have items for our senator. You have those items. What's your pleasure?
I look for approval.
Is there a second? Robert move the second. Any question? Question? Do we have any?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may respectfully make a motion under purchase requisitions, our request, they go into vote separately on one item entitled, the all member place.
Is there a second on that recommendation?
I'm sorry, is he just asking that to be separate?
Yes, it's all, yes.
And then you need to move, we need a second.
Yes. Thank you, that's second. Question called a motion. Here we now let us vote for the motion.
President Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Adam Hutton? Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Staden?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Yes.
Six yeses.
Thank you, motion carries. We have a second on the senator. Are we prepared to vote?
Mr. President, if I may?
Question?
About the consent?
Board member Brian?
Uh, as pointed out earlier on the consent agenda under a law governing the court, the first listing that does say not to exceed two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in total of two hundred and eighty-six thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars and one cents, can we have a quick explanation of that discrepancy, please?
Dr. Bur, can you address that?
The finding, the findings that you are approving is for the cost, the educational cost for students incarcerated. And oftentimes, the budget is certain amount of money for students incarcerated, assuming that, well, I have, you know, maybe eight hundred thousand dollars that we'll have to use to pay for their education, but that does not always pan out, because we oftentimes have more students incarcerated than we have budgeted for. And so what you're voting on is to pay the cost of the now whole accounting for the education of students who are currently incarcerated.
I have one more question about that. I would, uh, I understand fully the need that we have to cover these students' education. Um, I worry about the legal implications, and maybe at this point we can have attorney of fire check about it, and just make sure that there's no complications that goes on something that does say not to exceed a certain amount.
And to find out why it says not to exceed a certain amount.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board members. I would leave a little time to review the agreement that was reached prior about that not to exceed amount. This is the first I've heard that sort of, or it's comfortable, perhaps that's something that can be tabled. Have they done review? Make sure that everything is in order, and then back to a vote later.
So, Mr. President?
This money is, is title one money. It comes out, there's a juvenile fund that is entitled one funding at those directly for juvenile services, and this money is, is out of that money. So we never know what the cost is going to be, because we don't know the number of students, so we try to benchmark it based on the year before. And I think if you would go back from last year, we had to do the same thing last year, same thing the year before, because we don't know the numbers that are going to, to be serving through the process here. It is, it is title one, it is specifically earmarked for juvenile court system to educate the students.
Thank you, Dr. Lali. Board member Brian, is that right? Are you satisfied?
I am satisfied, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Let us at this time, we're prepared to vote on the senator.
President Harris?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Staden?
Yes.
Ms. Sweet Denny?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Thank you, motion carries. Dr. Lali? All right, let us, are we prepared to vote on the all-en? Contract?
President Harris?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
No.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Staden? Ms. Staden? Dr. Staden? Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Sweet Denny?
Yes.
Four yeses, one no, one absolute.
Thank you. This time, Superintendent, recommendation?
I'd like to recommend that the, that the Board approve the DEA reservations after July tenth.
Are we prepared to vote? Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Robert move the second, are we prepared to vote?
President Harris?
No.
Mr. McManus?
No.
Ms. Ryan?
No.
Ms. Staden?
No.
Dr. Walker?
No.
Ms. Sweet Denny?
No.
Six no.
Thank you, motion carries.
I'd like to recommend that the Board review the general wide of way and ESO proposal.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any question on the motion? Here we now, are we prepared to vote? Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Mr. Taylor?
Listen, I can't talk. Mr. President, um, this is kind of off subject a little bit, and I have my permission, and it's okay to, because at my last meeting, I had asked about some information in terms of the exit of the building, and I was just wondering if we could pass some information on that, if anyone had checked into it.
The exit, um, Mr. President, I mean, the exit is blocked. Uh, there's a fence that's moved over for the construction to occur. So you are correct in that it is blocked for the purpose of them digging on the property.
I don't believe it's under fence. Not fence, it's not fenced under a property, that's, I think so. The line was standing in that, but they have walked, oh, on the other side of it.
Yes.
Right, right. And so is that going to be corrected, or are they compensating us? I mean, I don't, I don't understand, and I didn't know that it was going to include the landmark.
Good evening, again. Dr. Lali is correct, there is a fence blocking one point of heat rest on our property currently, which has been an inquiry into the Dayton Public Library to find out the purpose behind it and how it will back.
Okay, thank you.
The proper move is second, are we prepared to vote?
President Harris?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Staden?
Yes.
Ms. Sweet Denny?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Motion carries, thank you.
I'd like to recommend the approval of an amendment in the city of Dayton on the tax debate.
Is there a second?
Second.
The proper move is second, any question on the motion? Here we now, are we prepared to vote?
President Harris?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Staden?
No.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Sweet Denny?
Yes.
Five yeses, one no.
Thank you, motion carries.
I'd like to recommend the approval of the organizational chart for the two thousand and nineteen school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
The proper move is second, any question on the motion? Here we now, are we prepared to vote?
President Harris?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Staden?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Sweet Denny?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Thank you, motion carries. Thank you, Superintendent, this time we have Treasurer's recommendations.
Before we go to the Treasurer's recommendations, may I raise a question?
Yes, Dr. Walker.
Based on the concerns that you boys here, I would like to ask the Superintendent if she would provide us with, um... By my means, based on the concerns of your voice here, I would like to ask the superintendent if she would provide us with an update on especially our NEA population and our, how we'll respond and, so that as the board, I can be more informed and make sure that we're responding to all the young people off our students in Dayton schools with the assistance of everyone.
Are you asking superintendent to smile, president or?
No, I think that if she would give us a written response to the concern that we've heard here today so that we can be ensured that we're providing the best for our students in DPS.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Walker. And also please know, audience, that we are responding even as we are speaking to you. We have personnel already working on that back. Thank you. Treasurer.
I recommend the following items be afterward. A, supplemental application. B, amended certificate of estimated resources. C, ZANM certificate. And D, permanent transfer.
Is there second? Second, the proper move is second. Any question on motion? Here we now, are we prepared to vote?
President Harris?
Yes.
Senator Manis?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Sweet Danny?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Treasurer, I'm sorry.
Senator, this is my recommendation.
Thank you very much. Please let the record show that all of the items on treasurer's recommendations, superintendent, I had the proper motions in fact. We move now to the business. Is there a motion to exceed board members' travel expenses? So, the, the proper move is there second?
Second.
Any question? Here we now, are we prepared to vote?
President Harris?
Yes.
Senator Manis?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Sweet Danny?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Motion carries. Item number B, the resolution to appoint delegate to the OSBA annual business meeting. Is there motion? So, something. Is there second?
Second.
Rock and move is second. Any question on the motion? Are we prepared to vote?
President Harris?
Yes.
Senator Manis?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Sweet Danny?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Thank you, motion carries. This time we will have policy reading. Dr. Walker, maybe chair of our policy committee will come at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. It's a resolution to adopt board policy first and second readings of rationale. And as much as the Dayton Board of Education is committed to the continued updating of its policies, rules, and regulations in manual and the committed reports of point that have been working toward that goal. The filing is brought at this time for Senator Sematania's first and second meeting in compliance with board files. Now therefore, it is all that the Board of Education of the Dayton City School District, Governor County, Ohio, hereby accept the following foreign policies which have been codified in conclusion in the head book of policies, rules, and regulations. And they are as follows. File AMC dash one, also GCN dash one, and its title, Evaluation of Professional Staff. And it's being advised to better refine the district practice. The second file is GCN dash one, also AFC dash one. Its title is Evaluation of Professional Staff. It's also being provided to better refine district practice. I recommend the adoption, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Walker. At this time, board member Ryan, you have a guess of us to see?
Excuse me, I think it's first and second, and I think we need, we have to vote.
I apologize, Dr. Walker. Is there motion?
Yes, I do.
Is there second?
Second.
Any question on motion? Here we now, are we prepared to vote?
President Harris?
Yes.
Senator Manis?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Sweet Danny?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Board member Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I am honored to introduce to the board and to the public a person who is new to our community. I'm very grateful that she is part of this community. Many of you know Nancy Nery and the work she has served on the board and the work she has done in establishing the Dayton Home Schools Foundation, the philanthropic arm of the Dayton Public Schools. She is very excited, as are we all, myself as a member of the Dayton Public Schools Foundation, to introduce Erica Harries, who has been new director of development of the Dayton Public Schools Foundation. I would like to invite Erica to come to the podium and introduce herself briefly and welcome her to the community.
So again, for those of you who are unfamiliar with the Dayton Public Schools Foundation, we are the philanthropic arm in which supports the efforts of the school district from anywhere from teacher grants to hopefully one day very large grants that will support the entire district. For the past three years, this effort with the foundation has been completely volunteer-led. And in this past year, we've had a board of education members join us on board and we also have the principal of Kaiser join our board. And so in addition to all of that volunteer support, the foundation has been able to set aside some funds to find a contract staff person, which would be myself, to meet those philanthropic efforts with the board. So I come to Dayton with almost 20 years experience in fundraising and career writing and look forward to raising money to support the school system as best possible.
Thank you, Erica. I would also like to, as a member of the Dayton Public Schools Foundation, disclose to everybody that I have been tasked with the wonderful job of raising money in behalf of the board. So at this time, I would like to extend to my fellow board members the opportunity we have to support the Dayton Public Schools Foundation. I would love to have 100% participation and donations from my fellow board members. I pledge to contribute to the foundation. I was thinking about, and I would suggest to you, we are all reimbursed a nominal amount for each meeting that we attend, which is $125. I would be donating $125 for one meeting to the Dayton Public Schools Foundation and I would love it if other board members would do so as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, board member Ryan. We want to extend our condolences to the family of young Bianca this weekend, Brian. He was a young student, promising student, and he take Brian, we want to extend to his family our condolences for the district. Thank you. Do we have any other matters of business to speak? Board member Ryan, as one of the items shared.
Thank you again, Mr. President. At this time, I am pleased to announce that we have started the scheduling of the quarterly town halls. I also was other members of this board campaigning to monopromise that we would and we would give the community more. We have some big business on our office that came in and I would like to announce to the public that our first meeting will be September 17th. Sharice, do we have the location of that yet or should I announce it later? Okay, we will announce it later. I am excited to see the public out on the 17th so that we can better engage and have a conversation with the people in the community who care as deeply about the public school as the, myself and the fellow board members do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there motion for adjournment? Salute.
Second.
Question on motion? Here we now, are we prepared to vote?
President Harris?
Yes.
Senator Manis?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Sweet Danny?
Yes.
Six yeses.